You ready?
All right. Good evening, everyone. At this time, it's 6:00 PM on December 12th. Time of the post meeting. At this time, I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we have a quorum.
First order business will be the Pledge of Allegiance and Indication, which is not to be led by Buffy. Thank you. You can come up here if you want, or there you want.
And if you'll just remain standing for an indication, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our most gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you with a thankful heart, thankful, Lord, for your love, your mercy, your grace. Lord, we pray for this time of season. Lord, we know that some will be sad during Christmas, and we pray for their hearts, Lord. We pray that you would remind us to remember what the real season of Christmas is and what the meaning is. Lord, we pray that you would continue to bless our county, Lord. We pray for our country, Lord, and we pray for Israel. Lord, I ask of you that for the folks that are in charge of the county, Lord, I pray that you would give them wisdom and guide us in the correct direction, Lord. And, Lord, I give you all the praise. In your name we pray. Amen.
Next item is recognition of any elected officials. Next is recognition of any veterans.
I'm Steve Fajet, U.S. Army.
David Cotton, U.S. Navy.
Johnny Hutchins, U.S. Army. You guys already got one.
Next, we'll recognize any law enforcement present.
Danny Maddow, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office.
And last, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Carrie Bowden, Assistant Attorney Minister for Megan Johnson, Bureau of General District, DSA.
Here, Daddy, this is where the fire department first war.
Sure, let me pass.
I'd like to state at this time, so there was a public hearing scheduled for tonight. So the public hearing for SRI III LLC, which would have been a small business that sent a grant, has been postponed to further notice. The taxpayer has requested to hold off on the public hearing due to a discovery bill that the county did in October, and it's not paid yet. The tax center also found a typographical error on the discovery bill that needs to be corrected. So that will be scheduled at a future date. With that, first item on the agenda is a motion to adopt a proposed agenda. Commissioners, you have, we have presented the agenda or any things to be added or deleted from the agenda.
Make the motion, will you?
Hold on a second.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented. Any questions or discussion? Right here, not all the fair will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. We have two special recognitions tonight. First of all, we have Murphy's Annual Toy Run, John, and Buffy. Thank you all for being here. Thank you all for what you do. This is a very beneficial event to a lot of needy children in the community, so thank you, my chores.
Okay.
Do you have anything you'd like to say?
If you just want to talk about Murphy's Toy Run and what it was and the purpose, and we'll have a proclamation for you guys when you're done.
Okay. Speak to the emergency.
To the board.
Okay. This was our 29th annual toy run. We started the toy run after our daughter was born, and she turned 29 in September. And when we first started out, we started out with eight motorcycles, and four of those was my husband's, and my daddy, and my mama. Johnny Hutchins were part of the first team that rode, and we thought we were something being police escorted with eight motorcycles. This year, we had 520 motorcycles, and we fed over 750 people in our yard. We do a barbecue and the entire sides to go with it. When we first started the toy run, we gave the toys to the Shriners Hospital. My husband was not a mason, nor was he a shriner, but my dad was. And we knew what a good event, what a good organization the Shrine Hospital was. Since then, our boxes, and we use appliance boxes from Hendrick's Appliance, so they're large. Since then, we've gone from like one box to 16 boxes, not counting the monetary donations that we're able to give. And since then, we have added to the Shriners Hospital in Greenville, the Masonic Home for Children, which used to be known as the Masonic Oxford Orphanage, the Cleveland County Sheriff's Office, and the Kings Mountain Police Department. And at this time, we have delivered all of our toys, and we have went shopping with the Sheriff's Office. And it's my understanding that just right here in Cleveland County with our Sheriff's Office, with us kind of being elves, they are sponsoring 175 children right here in Cleveland County, not counting the families, because they are doing some extra stuff for those children's family. We're just very honored that we can continue to do this. And there was only one year that my husband wasn't able to do it, and he had back surgery. And my dad said, "Honey, don't you worry about it. The toy run shall go on." And it did. And we just appreciate you all having us here, and it's an honor for us to be able to help Cleveland County and the surrounding areas.
Thank you very much.
An appreciation of Murphy's Toy Run. Whereas in 1994, Murphy's Motorcycle Toy Run was formed to deliver toys to the Shriners Children's Hospital while actively promoting a positive image of motorcyclists through community engagement and support. And whereas Cleveland County is proud to be home to Murphy's Toy Run as this group of hardworking volunteers recognizes that many families need assistance in order to ensure a happy holiday season for their children. And whereas John and Buffy Murphy have voluntarily served communities and organizations such as the Shriners Hospital, Masonic Home for Children, Cleveland County Sheriff's Office, the Kings Mountain Police Department, and other families in need across North and South Carolina for many years. And whereas these 29 years of service have been marked by their exemplary dedication to the best interests of local and surrounding families and communities, ensuring hundreds of childrens will have a gift to open on Christmas morning. And whereas John and Buffy Murphy, along with their team of volunteers, continually contribute hours and resources to our communities. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners hereby commends and thanks Murphy's Toy Run for their selfless service and dedication to those in need, wishing them and their team continued success. Adopted this the 12th day of December, 2023.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's good not seeing you.
Hey, one thing about it, John plays Santa Claus. And he will come to your house.
And the real beer.
The real beer.
Yeah, you got to book early to get him.
Thank you, sir.
He's got a Santa Claus engagement at one of his schools.
Thank you for watching.
Thank you.
Thank you all. The next item we have tonight is the Small Park of the Year Award. This was given to the Broad River Campground. At this time, I'll recognize Mr. Tyler Watts. He's going to come forward and tell us about Broad River Campground and the award that they received.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tyler Watts. I'm one of the developers of Broad River Campground. You probably remember me a couple of years back here, standing here, trying to pitch my, this little idea I had of building a campground here in this community. And fast forward a couple of years, we are in the final stages of development, getting ready to have around 56 RV sites, 10 cabins, five of your glamping domes, five tent sites, a clubhouse, a pool, splash pad, nature trails. It kind of goes on and on, right? We had the opportunity this past November to attend a national conference called OHI, which stands for Outdoor Hospitality Industry. It's a conference where campgrounds from across the country come together, they network. One of the big things at this conference is being able to win an award in different categories. Us being new to the game, very fresh, very one-year-in operation. We applied with understanding that we probably wouldn't make it. We made the top three cut. We got a little excited. We bought plane tickets. We went up there. They thought I was from Texas because I got this deep southern accent. But we were very fortunate enough and humbled enough to win this prestigious award out of thousands of campgrounds in the country. And it's a peer-reviewed and judged award. So it's not just a set of judges that's not in the industry. It's by your fellow competitors. So we didn't expect it by any means, very humbled by it. I don't know if there's another park in the country that's won it in their first year of operations, so that speaks volumes. So very pleased and humbled by that. But again, that's, for me at least tonight, that's not the true meaning of the park. The true meaning of the park's our staff. I've got three of our core staff here tonight, Mr. Jake Wisnitz, Ms. Gina, Ms. Sarah. They share the same passion I do. You guys got to come up here. I can't do this without you. Come on. They put in countless hours. Most of you probably know them in some fashion in other careers or industries, but to see them interact at the park, to see them engaged at the park, to see them grow the park is something I can't take credit for in any way, shape, or form. So very much humbled by them, very much appreciative of them. If you call up there, you're most likely going to speak with Ms. Gina or Ms. Sarah. And if you ain't got something booked by the end of the phone call, something's wrong, because they know how to sell, and they also know how to make accommodations there for you second to none. We do have a, I call ourselves a five-star park. The main reason is, is if you look on our Google reviews, which we do, it does account for a lot for us, we're five-star. That's very hard to accomplish, and I take zero credit for that. Those three individuals right there, the core staff for us, are the main reason for that. They go above and beyond to help clients and guests not only be comfortable at our park, but to be comfortable here in the county. Our goal and our hope is to show loyalty to the county that we want to grow, and we want to bring something to this county that is comparable to anything and everything out there. We want Cleveland County to be a mark. We want it to be a signature place. The World Series has done a great job of that. We want to help complement that in any way, shape, or form we can. So we'd like to thank you guys for your support, for everything you've done for us and allowed us to do. If you ask me, this is just the beginning. I want to continue to grow in this county and continue to just grow as an individual. So thank you so much for everything you've done and allowed us to do. Thank you for allowing us to speak. And again, this night's not about me or the campground. It's about our staff there. They, I couldn't do it without them. They are hands down, I will put them up against any campground in the United States, and I got a little trophy to prove that. So we're very humbled and thank you for everything.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
If it's not too much to ask, could we do a quick photo? I know you already done round one.
No, we could do that, sir.
All right, y'all come on up here.
Just start getting relaxed.
I found my place now, so it's been right.
That's right. On the rock.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
See you. Congratulations. All right, next we have a special presentation, Crisis Response Canines.
Yes. We have three special ladies here with three special canines, and if they would come up and let everybody know what they do, and cause it's a pretty incredible story.
Hi, my name is Robin Ledford, and this is my partner, Major. This is Jane Williamson, Sunny, and James Wood, and Maggie. Had to look and see which dog you had. We are with Crisis Response Canines. That's a national organization that certifies dogs, canines, to respond to people when they're in a crisis or a disaster, which can be anything. We've responded to the condo collapse in Miami. We've been to tornadoes. We've been to a school shooting. We actually went to a death of a giraffe at a zoo one time. So anything that's a crisis, we also are here for our first responders. It's a proven fact, there's a lot of science that interacting with the dogs helps relieve stress, helps your brain heal and prevent PTSD. Clara Barton actually started using therapy dogs in the 1800s. So there's a lot of science behind what we do. We're available for not just major disasters, but everyday events. We try very hard to work with our fire department and are hoping to get in with some of our other agencies here in Cleveland County. Cleveland Counties are very unique that there's three of us in Cleveland County. There's very few of us with the certifications that we have that are scattered around the country. So the fact that the three of us are right here is a little different than a lot of places, so we're hoping that Cleveland County will take advantage of what we do and what we can offer. And we're just very excited to be serving our community and, you know, elsewhere, but especially here in Cleveland County. We're all certified in psychological first aid and critical incident stress management. The dogs hold several certifications. They're canine good citizens. They have a canine good citizen advanced certification and a canine good citizen urban certification plus a crisis response canine certification. So we've spent hours and hours and hours of training. We're not just, we get called a lot, the middle-aged ladies with their dogs. It's what we get, we're kind of known around town as. Hopefully, we're a little bit more than that. But we're very happy to serve, and we're hoping we can serve the county more in the future.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just want to say, now, Robin and I go back way, way. I mean, I don't think you were into this when we first met, when you, way back when. That's been 10, 11 years ago, I guess. But I'll just be honest, when I first saw something that y'all went to, maybe in Florida or somewhere where the condos collapsed, in my mind, the dogs were going to get people out of the condos, you know, and then I started talking to you, and it was very interesting where you told the story about how y'all were in certain areas where the families were, that homes just crashed down, and how the dogs responded to the people and even the emergency responders when you would be going out and about, you know, because it is so.
Yeah, it's a very common situation for us. Like in Miami, we were in what was supposed to be the Family Reunification Center, and unfortunately, there was nobody to be reunified in that. But we met all kinds of people there, but we would walk in from place to place. The first responders would just stop us in the street and fall down on the ground with the dogs and just hug them for five or 10 minutes. And then they would say, "Oh, it's just what I needed."
Yeah. It makes a world of difference. And I will say, Gaston County has a, their own service dog, the county does. So I think, you know, with three that are more even farther up the ladder than that, it'd be great for you guys to get in places and help when there's crisis and, you know, the need.
Thank you for inviting us tonight.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for what you do.
We have presents, too.
Anybody else?
They got presents, they got cards.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Two different in there, yeah. We'll have to give these out. Now, are these valuable as time goes along? Do we need to collect them?
We were in Nashville, kids were collecting.
Come on, guys, I think she.
Oh, we got to take them. Oh, yeah, let me find my spot now that I know where my spot is.
Get the right place, Emma.
We got the spot?
Well, I thought they had me in the right place, and Carrie made me farther over, so we're going to mark it.
All right, the next item, a public comment. Madam Clerk?
The citizen, excuse me, the public comment portion of a board of commissioners meeting is an opportunity for persons wishing to appear before the board to do so. Citizens and speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak and will address all comments to the board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation and are prohibited from using profanity or making threats of violence or personal attacks against any person. All comments on the speaker shall be issue-oriented and directly related to a subject that the commissioners have oversight and authority. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to address the board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker. Any comments where the primary purpose is to promote a business or candidacy shall not be allowed.
All right, first one, Robert Williams.
My name is Robert Williams. Live at 814 East H. Coates Trail. That's the Longdale address. I live in Fulton. What I want to comment on tonight is two things, really. One is item zero in your consent agenda, which is next, I believe, on the agenda. Item zero is basically, it says, "Real Estate Purchase Agreement Cancellation." Well, I looked up the staff report and found out that that was about, it's about Project Sunrise. Now, Project Sunrise is not a new thing. It was a lot of things associated with it, jobs that supposedly were good-paying jobs. It looks like everything's canceled. As far as I'm concerned, that was the right thing to do. And in a public forum, just like right now, I suggested that we look at Project Sunrise a whole lot more in detail, and that's months and months ago. And it looks like the county manager's done a good job and came to the right conclusion and right recommendation. And I hate to say, "I told you so," but I did. But that's not what I really wanted to speak about tonight. That is about later in the agenda, you have a Justice Center change order. And I noticed, I noticed that the original estimate for the foundations that this item is about, the original estimate was around $2 million. Now, this is the fourth change order, and it's escalated to $15 million. Now, I did a little calculation. That's a 750% increase. And a project that started out estimated to cost $90 million, if we multiply that by 750%, I did a little calculation sitting right there just a few minutes ago. In my calculation, that comes up $7 billion, $750 million. I would suggest that this whole thing, this whole project, Justice Center project be looked at a little bit more. If we're going to have this kind of escalation on every item, I don't know that we can afford that. And I would suggest, back to Project Sunrise, that we talk to, that the commissioners talk to economic development and not let those kind of projects come as far as they did. It's wasted a lot of taxpayer money. And here, we're talking about billions of dollars more than we originally estimated. And a billion dollars is a lot of money. And a lot, that's a lot of money that's going to be coming out of taxpayers' pockets. So I'd recommend looking at it a little farther. Thank you.
Steve.
Good evening. I am Steve Fajet, 105 Monteith Lane, Shelby. I'm also the director of the Small Business Center in Cleveland County. In case you've forgotten, I love what I do, and I'm having a ball since I retired. Been there eight and a half years now. And I'm here tonight just to thank you for your support for the Small Business Center. COVID really hit small businesses hard, and you folks supported us and really wanted you to understand how much we appreciate your support, especially the tax incentive that I understand you've got a couple going on now, where that if the business does invest some more, they can get a little tax break. And I do appreciate that, as do the businesses. I appreciate the referrals that you send to me because occasionally, somebody will come over and say, "I found out about you from one of the commissioners." I said, "Well, good. They know I'm here now." And I want to keep that in front of them because I want you to know that I want you to share that information with anybody in the county. Because if they want to start a business, hey, I'm your guy, okay? And I do want you to understand that I, as a speaker here, am supposed to address just commissioners. So if you will, when you see Betsy Hornage, the Register of Deeds, she is the Cleveland County champion of referrals. I get referrals from the Register of Deeds office about every week, and it's a regular occurrence. But thanks to her, I do get some opportunities to help people start and grow small businesses. So when you see Betsy tell her, I said, "Thank you." I wanted to share one last thing with you, and that is, I've had so much fun and enjoyed it so much, I decided I want to grow a little bit. And so I'm planning to open a satellite office in the city of Kings Mountain. I've been down there the last couple of months, I guess, and look at a few places, and I'm almost ready to put together a finished plan. So sometime in January, February timeframe, I want to open up a satellite office there. I won't be there full-time, all 40 hours a week or anything, but I want to start off and see if we can't get more businesses. I do get a lot of referrals from Kings Mountain, and a lot of folks have got some futures going on down there with the casino and with all the things that are happening there with the lithium plant and all that, Albemarle. So I'm looking forward to seeing what we can develop in Kings Mountain as well, but it's still Cleveland County Small Business Center. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Commissioners, we have been presenting the consent agenda items and had an opportunity to look at those. So with that, I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Set moved.
Hold on a second.
All right, we have a motion, the second, to accept the consent agenda. Are there any other discussion? Right here, none, and our hand a motion to approve. Oh, we have that, right? All the fair will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. First item on the regular agenda is the Justice Center Change Order. At this time, I'll recognize our manager, David.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you is change order number four, and that is for the foundation package of the construction project. There were three bidders. Originally started out with five, but only three responded fully. All addenda are attached. They are one through six. They are one through six. We did have signed and sealed bid forms. The hub forms were attached as well as the bid bond. The lowest responsible bidder was Camps Construction. And as you can see, the total amount, including Yates MedCon's construction management fee, is $6,128,240 for a time period of 111 calendar days to complete that work immediately following the micro appears to be installed. We're still waiting for Department of Insurance comments back on those. But that is before you for your consideration to approve or to not.
Commissioners, what questions or discussion might you have?
The only question I would have is, this starts after the peers go in, right?
Yes, sir.
So, but we can go ahead and sign the contract and get them ready to go. So they'll be ready to go as soon as the peers are in?
Yes, the Camps Construction's bid is only good for 60 days. So this locks them in under contract, and we hold that bid price.
If there are questions or comments, I'll make a motion there, please.
Do we need, do we need a motion to?
Yes.
Yes, we need a motion to accept the change. Make a motion to accept the change.
I'll second.
I have a motion, the second, to accept the change order. You said with $6 million and something?
$6 million, 128,240.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, I hear none. All of those fellows say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is board appointments. I think we have three of those. So at this time, I'll recognize my chair, I mean, our clerk.
Good evening, board. We have several board appointments for this evening. The first is the Agricultural Advisory Board. At this time, you will need to appoint two members to serve a three-year term ending December 31, 2026. As you know, this board requires certain criteria and certain part of farmland preservation and things to be approved. And all applicants have been vetted and approved and are eligible to serve.
I'll make a motion to appoint Wayne Yarber and Matt Bell.
I'll second that.
Motion, the second, to appoint Wayne Yarber or Matt Bell. Any other discussion? All of those fellows say aye. Anyone opposed? Those two names, motion carries unanimous. Next one is the Animal Services Board.
You will need to appoint one person to serve an initial one-year term ending December 31, 2024. This position is for the last remaining open seat on that board. And this applicant, applicants would be either a member of a hunting gun or dog organization. And so that would fit that criteria.
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Max Turner.
I'll second.
I have a motion, the second, to appoint Mr. Max Turner to the Animal Services Board in the seat of a member of a hunting gun or dog organization. All of those fellows say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. Next item is the Cleveland County Board of Adjustment.
You will need to appoint two board members and one alternate member to serve a three-year term ending December 31, 2026. All applicants have been vetted and are able and willing to serve.
I'd like to nominate Bobby Watson and Thomas Fletcher as board members and Paul Albach as alternate.
Second.
So we have a motion, the second, to appoint three names that were listed for the Cleveland County Board of Adjustment. And we have a second. Are there any other discussion? I hear none, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion, the approval was unanimous. And the last one is the Cleveland County Planning Board.
Commissioners, you will need to appoint three people to serve a three-year term ending December 31, 2026.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Matthew Hoard, Eddie Key, and Jake Carpenter.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, the second, to appoint the three names listed for the Cleveland County Planning Board. Are there any additional discussion? I hear none, all in favor will say aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimous. Does any of the commissioners have anything they'd like to report?
Just like to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Staff, David, Phyllis, Martha, you got it. All right, before we take the motion to adjourn the next meeting, the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will be held on Tuesday, January 16, here at 6:00 PM in the Commissioners' chambers. With that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed?